Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. Today is March the seventeenth, two thousand and twenty. The time is now six oh three P. M. A city council meeting is being held in the city council chambers with remote city council members in their individual homes. So for those that are out in the public that are listening to this broadcast, we apologize for having to bring this meeting to you in this way. However, due to the current circumstances that we have, we're fortunate that our staff has been able to at least come up with this, you know, at least this way that we can at least continue to do business. So let's go ahead and we'll rise to have the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, indivisible, and just as all. Okay, Audra, are you down there that you could have a roll call?
Grago?
Here.
Grago?
Here.
Mate?
Here.
Ogletree?
Here.
Chu? Williamson?
Here.
Grago?
Here. Guys, what we're going to do tonight is I will go ahead and so that everybody can, like I usually have his input with any discussion that we have. And I'll start with what I usually do, going somewhere with Mr. Mate, Ms. Grago, of course Frank's not here, Ms. Ogletree, Mr. Goodall, and Mr. Williamson, so that everyone can have an opportunity to at least speak up if you have any opinions. Okay, any approval of the agenda? Does anyone have any changes to the agenda? Could have a motion? Have a second. Call vote, please. Audra, would you call the vote on that?
It's Kimberly.
Kimberly, would you call vote?
Yes.
Please.
Yes.
Mate?
Yeah.
We need to tell everybody to mute their thing unless they want to speak because the feedback, that's what's causing the feedback.
I lost it.
I was looking at the agenda on the other screens. Let me get back.
For everyone that could hear me out there, could you please mute your audio? Otherwise, we're getting a lot of feedback.
You want us to mute our audio?
Yes.
Until they want to speak.
When you want to speak, then unmute.
I'll mute the microphone.
Mute the microphone. Okay, sounds good. Okay, item number three, policies, items, and staff reports. Mike, you want to give us something on the COVID coronavirus considerations?
Yes, hoping everybody could hear me as well. Just as part of what the city is doing, we're working in conjunction with the health department. And so you know, we have a daily briefing call with the health department, and they give us updates. And on that call is Mount San Rafael Hospital, Spanish Peaks Health in Walsenburg, all the emergency managers from both Werfino and Los Anamis, sheriff, the police, the fire. Los Anamis County is on there, Werfino County, and all the area school districts. So we're there keeping us up to date on all the guidance and, you know, updates on the spread of this virus. The last update, as of four o'clock yesterday, the cases in Colorado was one hundred and eighty-three with twenty hospitalized and two deaths. Just tonight, I got online and we're already at two thirteen. So it is spreading. New Mexico has twenty-three, and of course, the U.S. is way up there. They mentioned the COHELP number for information. It's a CAN number that Colorado has. And they are, that number for you and for the public is eight seven seven four six two two nine one one. It is kind of a canned, you select, you know, numbers, and it kind of gives you a canned message. Today, I got a receipt, a website from the state that is much better and very informative. That is covid nineteen, C.O.V.I.D. nineteen dot Colorado dot gov. And that's for everybody on the line here. It's a good website, gives a lot of information. And the, it's just chock full of information, helpful. Wanting to let you know what we did as a city. We closed the welcome center. That's a lot of traveling public, that's staff by elderly. We closed the welcome center. We've closed the library. We've closed the community center. And we've closed City Hall to appointments only. If you can do your business online or by phone, we appreciate it. Otherwise, if you have to come in, we ask to take public call for an appointment, and we let people in. We're practicing, you know, the social distancing that's recommended. We're avoiding face-to-face contact as much as possible. We're washing our hands, you know, we're wiping down hourly. So that's all going on in City Hall. Utilities, we've allowed people to pay online, over the phone, or in the Dropbox. We have finally figured out that a way to waive the credit card fees. So credit card fees are waived for those wishing to pay online. And they, it's for, you know, a couple of months or until advised by the health department that things have changed and we can start opening our doors again. The police department is working on website reporting for non-emergencies. You know, everybody is stretched in with all this, and we want to do our best to not spread the virus. So we're following all the protocols of the CDC and the health department. There's been some questions on, as you know, the governor shut down all restaurants and pubs and bars and everything to help with that. There's been some question on dispensaries. We've requested information from the health department and guidance there, and they are talking to the state. We know a lot of people come in from out of town.
I'm muted.
I'm sorry, what?
There you go, you're back on. Could you repeat what your last couple of sentences, please? What's it auto muted?
Ah, okay. So what I was talking about was the marijuana dispensaries and asking the health department for guidance. And they're talking with the state, not sure what the governor is going to do with the dispensaries. People have been calling in with questions because there's a lot of out-of-town travel to our town, and there's concern there. So we're asking for guidance and protocols on that. And with that being said, we're also asking about the medical side of the dispensaries because people are using that instead opioids for, you know, pain management and such. So waiting for guidance on that. In your packet, there was a pretty good package from the CDC. It gives a lot of the regulations on what people are doing. This is a fluid situation. So it's, we're trying to keep up, we're trying to manage, we're trying to do everything we can. There has also been, you know, some questions about businesses and what are they, excuse me, what are they going to do with their employees that they shut down? The state is working for quicker unemployment turnaround for those that are out of jobs. For the businesses themselves, they have opened up the SBDC and SBA offices for online applications. And I believe, Wally Wallace is on. Wally, are you there? And can you speak to what you're doing with economic development and try and help these businesses get through this?
Yeah, I've just been reaching out to folks and trying to at least get everybody linked in together. I've been speaking with some of the folks from O Edit and from Startup Colorado who've been providing some resources. As you already touched on, SBA and SBDC are offering low-interest loans. That the whole process is really expedited right now because of the current crisis. There's new stuff coming before me all the time. Actually, Andrew Snyder, I see is in this meeting as well. He just sent me an interesting one less than an hour ago. More low and no-interest loan opportunities for some businesses. But at this point, we're still just kind of waiting to see what the federal and state governments will start releasing as far as support to help the local businesses that are struggling through all this. Also, if you look in the messages right now, Andrew just provided a link to some of the services that are being provided by the government right now, or the state government. And we've been working with Nisha at the chamber on this project. They've been doing to get restaurant information out to the public. And basically, we're just trying to figure out what kind of support we can offer. I will say, in the long run, I don't know how long-term this will affect us. And I think we might need to be aware at some point that we might need to provide some sort of support for these businesses that are struggling. So I just want to let you all know that that might be something we need to consider in the future. I also do want to touch on the fact, a few weeks ago when I gave my report to you all, I spoke briefly about Jeff Peters and I, and I who have been working on a revolving loan fund. And we have been in touch with Colorado Lending Source over the past two days. And we're really ready to move forward on that possibly. So you'll be hearing from us very soon on that.
Thank you, Wally. So there's a lot of information coming from the CDC, from the U.S. government, from the health department. But we had a staff meeting today on this platform. It seemed to work well. We'll get used to it. But basically, they've been told if you feel sick, stay home. We'll work with you on your sick leave, and you won't need doctors' slips for if you need to stay longer, out longer in a couple of days. If your children are sick, keep them home. If someone in your household is tested positive, keep the entire household home. Just going down the list, if you're an older person, consider self-isolation. And those with underlying health conditions, that's who it seems to be affecting. So we're trying to be proactive and help employees in every way we can. And of course, city business continues on. But we've asked the department heads to trim where they can because this is affecting, you know, our revenues because a lot of our tax retail sales are being shut down. So we're monitoring that very closely. And we've got some, you know, essential items that we have to do. But non-essential, we are doing our best, the staff and the department heads, to curb the spending until we see where this goes. So with that, I think that's where we are. And I'll turn it back to you there.
Okay, thank you. Onto item four, petitions or communications oral written. Of course, we don't have anything here tonight unless Mr. Murphy has something to say.
No.
Onto item number five, our consent agenda. Council, you will notice that I have asked Audra to put all of the appointments in the consent agenda because we didn't want to have all of these people be able to tie in or be here. So I put to Aster to put them in on our consent agenda. So we'll read those off as we go along. So item, our item five A, approval of the regular meeting minutes of March the third, two thousand and twenty, and special meeting minutes of March the ninth, two thousand and twenty. Approval of the bills for one million six hundred ninety-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-five cents. Item C, approval of a special event permit, malt vinous and spirituous application filed by Arthur Roy Mitchell Memorial Incorporated at one fifty East Main Street for March the twenty-eighth, April the eighteenth, May the twenty-fourth, May the thirtieth, July the eighteenth, and October the thirty-first, and December the fourth, two thousand and twenty. Item D, approval of reappointment of Gabriel Moreno to the Los Anamis County E nine one Authority Board. Item E, approval of appointment of Janet Clark to the Carnegie Public Library Advisory Board. Item F, approval of appointment of Garrett Watson and Chad Kraft to the Space to Create Commons Oversight Board. Item G, approval of appointment of David Bratt to the Trinidad Urban Renewal Authority Commission. And item H, approval of the payroll, March seventh, two thousand and twenty, through March twentieth, two thousand and twenty, to March twenty-one, two thousand and twenty, through April third, two thousand and twenty, in the amount of three hundred sixty-five thousand, seven hundred seven dollars and ninety-eight cents. And I don't know if you guys will all have to unmute or not, need a motion?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Call vote, please.
Yes, with the exception of the minutes for the March, I wasn't present. Did that mean?
I mean, or something. Okay, Mate, I vote yes, but I think on the Abar Global Link of Action, we can grant it, but I can imagine that these would be three of those events would likely not be happening.
That's true. That is correct.
Twenty-eight, vote negative.
Williamson?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, onto item six, public hearings. Six A, public hearing for consideration of ordinance prohibiting hemp cultivation operations and other agricultural operation within the city of Trinidad's corporate limits. Hearing is now open. Les, do you have anything to add to this?
Mayor or council member is here, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so as you all know, this is the second reading of the public hearing for this matter. This ordinance was deemed necessary to, as I've mentioned previously, for some of the retail and medical marijuana cultivation industries within the city of Trinidad. As we have discussed, basically, any hemp actively being cultivated within the city of Trinidad could potentially contaminate flowering marijuana. So that is why we felt this ordinance is necessary. And I am standing by to answer any questions you may have.
Any discussion from council? If you want to say something, go ahead and unmute and then speak up, starting with Mr. Mate.
I'm here that I have nothing to contribute.
And Ms. Grago?
Regarding that correspondence regarding the CRN?
Yes.
So what people are asking us is to number something outside the city limits of Trinidad. Is that what I am looking at?
But I agree. I mean, it asks a number of questions. But what we are suggesting is that all hemp cultivation should take place outside of the city of Trinidad.
Okay.
Okay. And my understanding is the author and authors of this letter are wanting to cultivate within the city.
Okay, I got it. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Ogletree? Ms. Ogletree?
Only, can you hear me?
Yes.
I've only had a chance to read through what we got this afternoon one time, and I wasn't, I didn't grasp what the point they here just was bringing up, that they were trying to let us know something else outside the limits. But I, that's why I said that there's a condition inside that it shouldn't be a problem and that perhaps we should make an exception for those kinds of production facilities. I mean, because what they're saying, as far as they're telling us through, that as long as there are no male plants that they're working with, then they can't pollinate to female THC producing plant in the same way that growing several wide crops are that as well because they just want to plant. So I thought that, as best I could understand, they seem to be making a good point. And I thought we should take a look at what they're saying a little more closely.
And I would say, I would ask council to go forward on this ordinance and to then consider, if anyone does have a proposal for indoor hemp cultivation that they want to come forward with, then an exception could be made to the existing ordinance. Cultivating hemp is the kind of thing that requires a lot of room, a lot of space. And I will tell you, Councilwoman Ogletree, a lot of the filtration systems will not protect from what will be pollinated. That is, things can come in from outside the filtration. I understand your point of what you just said. But I don't know that we have any assurances that hemp cultivators, if there was an indoor hemp cultivation facility, that all male plants would be pollinated. I don't think we have any assurance that if there were male plants, that if they were allowed to exist, that the male plants, that they wouldn't be able to get outside of the filtration system and contaminate any nearby grows. So I would just suggest that this ordinance, I think, is still necessary to ensure that we don't have hemp cultivation facilities. But again, if they were to have an indoor hemp grow, they could perform, they could think at any time that they were ready to go forward with a hemp cultivation facility proposal.
Is this, because is the folks Colorado Processing LLC who sent this letter, or do they have an active grow going on in Trinidad right now that's producing hemp?
I do not believe there are any current hemp cultivation facilities at all. And I think if there were, we'd have a problem. But no, I don't believe they have a current hemp cultivation facility in Trinidad.
Okay. The only other comment I was going to make is that when I was up at the marijuana update in Pueblo, I asked some of the people up there who work in the hemp processing field about our proposed five-mile kind of, is that a safe distance? And they basically told me, they don't know. That it could be ten, it could be fifteen, they really don't know. There isn't any study that's been done that will guarantee that a distance of five miles is safe enough.
And I understand that. And I think I mentioned before, we were beginning with a discussion of that, the course that is involved. But instead, we also just said no hemp cultivation facilities within the state.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on to Mr. Goodall, you have any questions? Are you, have you unmuted?
Councilman Goodall, yeah.
I noticed that Mike had his hand up. Did you have something to add to that, Mike?
Well, I was, I just wanted to let Les know that he was breaking up, and I held my hand to my ear because I.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Also, that I believe that Department at Ag, you have to register hemp with the Department at Ag. I could be wrong, but go ahead, Councilman Goodall.
So I think we should move forward too with the case to case. With the way the winds blow around here, one male plant could literally cost the grows that we have to replace millions and millions of dollars in the same amount of taxes. I mean, we were definitely looking at the assurance for non-cross pollination, you know, most male marijuana plants, and this is the empty land. It takes one person to get a minute to totally pollinate a whole plant. And, you know, we pay into the terms of the cost. So I think we need to take every protection possible to protect our growth.
Okay, was that all that you had, Mr. Goodall?
Yes, sir, that's all I have.
Okay. Onto Mr. Williamson, you have any comment?
I have just a question. No, it's just back me back, sorry. So my question is, is this regulating hemp that is grown for commercial use versus a private use? And I don't, is there any, um, the, um, previous experience or any program, but is there any private, um, that's what I'm thinking about?
Well, this is, um, this is our attempt to regulate commercial hemp grows. And I will tell everybody, I omitted in my comments earlier that the correspondence we received just from the Colorado Processing LLC does pose the question, and I, this is kind of a roundabout way of answering the question, but I will get to that directly in just a moment, Councilman Williamson. They ask, what is the definition of a hemp cultivation facility? And paragraph A, and I do want to say that all of this, and much of this, but really all of this is regulated by Colorado statute. And it is CRS Section thirty-three five dash sixty-one dash one oh one at SEC, which defines not only a hemp cultivation facility, but many of the other terms that they would be using this.
Hey, Les, real quick, for anybody who has their mic on, would they turn them off, please, after you're done speaking? Go ahead, continue.
All right, thank you. Regulating individual hemp grows, while I don't really have the experience in dealing with or learning about people that have individual hemp grows, I would just say that any hemp being cultivated within the city limits could be a potential problem. It could contaminate, contaminate, excuse me, any retailer medical marijuana cultivation facility and their products.
Any other questions?
Councilman Williamson?
Any other questions, Mr. Williamson?
No, 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 no.
Okay. I had a couple of people on, I had a couple of people on that I'm not sure if they can listen in. Chad Craft, are you, are you on?
No, I haven't.
Chad, you had a comment earlier? I guess he can't hear me.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I was just getting that there, seeing a little bit overkill and. I, I was just gonna, maybe that there, uh, see a little bit over till when, uh, there's female plants in an indoor facility for commercial purposes. Uh, that, that's also a vital industry that's developing in the city here. And, uh, I think that, uh, that could be some for, uh, uh, regulation that's, that's, that's for such.
You go ahead.
If I, if I, if there was a proposal for an indoor hemp cultivation facility that involved only female plants, then I would say that would be something that a potential applicant should come forward with, any kind of, uh, you know, business proposal and let us know. And I think everyone would be more than happy to look at that and carve out an exception to this ordinance. I will just tell the council that this is necessary, especially as we're coming up on our next, uh, growing season. And as we said, hemp growing in the city or in close proximity to the city limits would ruin both outdoor and indoor marijuana cultivation facilities. So I, I think everyone is always happy to look at any kind of business proposal, but this is kind of a necessary growth process to try and avoid hemp cultivation, uh, that, that could contaminate marijuana.
Uh, one other person on, uh, is Janet Clark, Ms. Clark, are you out there?
Yes, question.
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good, I am here.
Go ahead, you had, did you have a comment on the hemp growing?
No, I don't, I'm just listening.
Okay, with that being, I guess, uh, there's no one else to speak for or against, uh, the hearing is closed. Uh, item six eight one, second reading of the-
Mayor.
Hold on, yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
I know that there are people online that wanna speak regarding to this. Um, I think you just need to have them identify this call and about it, speak one at a time. Um, Doug Peterson, Frank Sten, called, Inez Downs and Setty would be joining and he is online.
Okay, uh, Mr. Peterson, go ahead.
Yes, good evening, I hope I'm not beating back, uh, like we had earlier. Um, I'm, I'm the Colorado Processing. Uh, we also support our proposal with, uh, this. And, uh, causing no other problems with the hemp as plants and hemp plant. Our facility is, uh, is saving better, uh, intended for, uh, the industry to process, um, uh, of, of camp. And we, we have an experience. Uh, however, we, we, uh, we like, uh, uh, you know, plants, houses of the female only plants so that there would be no cross contamination. Uh, because the strains that we're considering using would be very important for us, uh, moving forward in our business. We understand why you propose this, but we also wonder if, if it would be prudent to exempt facilities such as ours that is really indoor grow, but it's mainly for testing and monitoring, uh, such that we could provide plants to local farmers that we've been discussing with that are way out in the county that would, would grow for us in the, this growing season. So that's kind of our position, I, we spelled it out as best we could in the letter, but maybe that'll learn my side, thank you.
Uh, Mike, do you have any comment on that? Or Les, Les, you might wanna comment after Mike. Yeah, I, I don't have anything at this time, Mayor. Uh, Les, would you have any comment?
Well, Mayor, any of that would be fine and I, I would just say that I don't know that there's a necessity for, uh, growing clones within the city limits. I mean, we would wanna have compara treatments and be able to monitor anything that is on. If there is a hemp cultivation, even if it's for, for clones or for, um, small plants, we would wanna be able to have a if you will, a regular, again, you know, with, with hemp clones, for lack of a better term, again, those as long as they agree that they're willing to export them to, like Mr. Peterson said, way out of the county. That'd be fine, but right now, um, we, we simply need to ensure that we have, um, no, no cross contamination, cross pollination of hemp with marijuana in the city limits. So I, I think we will be more than accommodating to do anything we can to help a fledgling industry as long as we're able to get, um, the assurances to be able to control any kind of hemp production so that there isn't a possibility of flowering hemp.
Okay, is there anyone else, uh, online that would like to speak? I'll go ahead and repeat, anybody else online that would like to speak? Um, Anthony Matei is holding up a sign he wants to talk, Ants, go ahead, Anthony, go ahead. Mr. Matei?
You're muted. Councilman Matei, you're muted. I couldn't.
I'm muted, okay, I'm cool with it. I, I appreciate everyone's concern and particularly the entrepreneurs who want to establish a hemp farm situation. I, 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 I recognize that, I see the benefits. Uh, I, remember, we have already in place a million dollar industry in prevention of marijuana. Here from the, for example, the point I'm trying to make relative to the coronavirus, I would rather listen to the doctors than the politicians. That having been said, if I could have somebody provide expert and qualified testimony to the fact that cross pollination and what can and can't happen, I would feel much more comfortable about making the decision either to allow or to deny him. But based on information provided by somebody who supports the idea because that's what they wanna do, I don't think that's due diligence enough on my part to make a decision until somebody who is more of an expert in this could direct me as to how to place my vote. Did you hear that?
Yes, sure did.
Okay, I'm off.
Okay, anybody else out there that would like to speak on the hemp? Doug Peterson?
Mayor, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Ogletree is wanting to speak back, I'm sorry, I'll be waiting.
I just needed to ask, uh, Mr. Matei. I, I just needed to ask, uh, Matei, if he's saying that he's not ready to vote on this or if he's saying he needs confirmation? Uh, that's one question, the other, the question I had was for, uh, City Attorney Downs. Do we typically write ordinance with this flat prohibition on, on a particular activity, keeping in mind that at some point this could create an exception? Is that something we typically do or should it not? If we have in mind that we want to have exceptions, should we not say that?
Uh, you want me to first?
Go ahead, Kelly.
Okay, if I want my answer first is, is this? I think I, I don't have enough information to suggest or support the idea that we should not have a moratorium on hemp. Because people who are saying that I, I should allow it have a vested interest in it. And I don't wanna risk damaging a million dollar industry, the, the city of Trinidad, the rise economic benefit and, and lose both. But if someone more qualified than a hemp holder could tell me why and how this should be allowed, I would be far more comfortable in allowing hemp. But right now, it's more of a clear conscience and what I understand about the, I, I would be reluctant to vote yes, let's allow. It, it is kind of like buying a used car. You should always have the, the check in the bin and all that kind of stuff first before, just because somebody tells you it's a good car. You know, that's what I'm trying to say, I don't mean to oversimplify the point, but that's where my head is right now.
Okay. Any, anybody else? Anybody else have comments? Les, Les, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ogletree, a question as well. And I would say, yes, this is kind of standard procedure. I mean, it is easy to try and accomplish what you are seeking to do and then carve out exceptions from that broader overall, um, uh, policy that you have, or, or in this case, in the ordinance, rather than to adopt an ordinance that could have every foreseeable contingency or exception in it. And, and I'm just, this is second reading, this is the public hearing, this is a group break, but I don't know at what point we, we heard from these folks or if we have heard in the private air. I don't wish to, uh, but I, I just wanna say that this is necessary and, um, it is much easier to do something like what we are doing here and, and carve out exceptions rather than to make combinations for all the possibilities.
Okay.
Okay, I do have a comment that I wanted to make and, uh, we did get a comment back from, uh, uh, Mr. Peterson asking that we have additional information on this before we go forward, but I think we need to move forward with this regardless. You know, we could always amend this and I think if, uh, we wanna open this up to, uh, any additional information, uh, I think in the future, that might be the, the time and rather than now, uh, you know, we can always amend this. It's, it's, like I said, these, these ordinance are not set in stone, they're made to be amended if necessary. And I think that's, maybe that's the direction that we need to go with this. Uh, any, uh, anybody have any comment on that? If not, let's go ahead and close out the hearing finally. Okay, item six A one, second reading of an ordinance prohibiting hemp cultivation operations and other hemp agriculture operation within the city of Trinidad's corporate limits. Uh, have a motion, please?
Mr. Goodall?
A second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Uh, Audra, would you call a vote, please?
Goodall?
Yes.
Ray, yeah?
Yes.
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Some reason or another, it says, I don't know.
Yeah, you guys, Council, Councilman Williamson just said in the attack setting that his internet just went out, so I think we just lost him.
Yeah. Okay, okay. And I'll, I, I vote aye. Okay, item seven, unfinished business, we have none. Item eight, miscellaneous business, consideration of creative district memorandum of understanding. Could have a motion?
Throw move.
Have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Matei?
Uh, not, no, nothing intelligent, sir.
Okay, Ms. Gregel?
Uh, when I was looking through this, this afternoon and, yeah, you know, I keep looking over things and it's, it's very hard to make a decision on anything involving the city because you've got the shadows of what's gonna happen to our economy behind us. And I, I looked through the MOU and there is nothing financial, there are no dollar amounts in there, but I'm just, I'm just truly afraid that I, you know, first of all, we're trying to incorporate funds that aren't mentioned in here for the council of 2021. And I, you know, I, I'm okay with the MOU, but I just, you know, if you guys thought I was conservative before, you ain't seen nothing yet. So I'm gonna be ultra financially, uh, conservative now, but just keep that in mind, I'm, I'm not opposed to it. I just want, I just want to mention that to you all.
Okay, Ms. Ogletree?
I, I think it's a helpful thing for the, uh, creative district to have a memorandum of understanding with the city. This took a long time to prepare and, uh, it's been run by the city attorney and, and gotten input from him. Um, the problem has been before now that it was an awkward dance where both sides weren't exactly sure what they were supposed to be doing. And this just lays down what everybody's job is. And, and that's very helpful to, to the creative district as it tries to move forward and put into place what we've asked them to do. So I, I, I fully support it.
Okay, Ms. Goodall?
I may have been supportive, I have no further comment besides that.
Okay, Mr. Williamson? We're talking about the creative district memo U.
Yes, sir, thank you, uh, sorry, my internet connection, uh, went away for a moment. Um, I am in support of, with no further comment.
Okay, the only comment that I had is I looked over it and there was a second part in there and I wish, because of the, I'm using my own computer here. Uh, I was a little concerned that the recommendations, uh, let's see, hold on, uh, let's see, okay. Mike just brought these to me. Uh, bear with me. The city obligation to be completed as soon as practical, um, for us, okay, that's assist in directing potential exhibit event workshop providers to the district and for us to manage the commercial space leases. Um, and continuing to assist in maintaining the project, including facilities and amenities. Now, I can understand most of those, the, um, item C and D, which is assist in the potential exhibit event providers and, um, the managed commercial lease spaces. Uh, Mike, do you have any particular thoughts on those two items? Those are the two things that caused me a little concern where I thought that the organization, uh, was going to take care of a lot of this. Try this.
Here, um, is there an item I chime in on this?
Sure.
This is a plea. Um, are, by the organization, do you mean art space?
No, no, I'm talking about the, uh, um, creative, the creative district.
Gotcha.
Cause you know, I, I, I don't, I don't think that we should be, I don't think that we should be the ones that are going out, having to look for people to fill these event spaces and doing these events, that should be their responsibility. Um, but that's what I read here, I'm not, I may be wrong.
We do have it there that, and actually, I don't even have a copy of it right in front of me, um, but I'm pretty positive that it is written in there that they are in charge of the management of events in that space, but that we basically will continue to try and direct people in their way. As for the leasing agreements, I have actually been told since I first stepped into this position that that would be one of the main roles of my role with economic development as to overlook these spaces. Um, I have been speaking with Mike and Audra about the possibility of bringing in a leasing, uh, entity to help us do that, but, um, I, yeah, I've been told since I first started that that would be one of the things that would be the responsibility of us, of the city, was to work on filling that space. And we've also been working on some creative ways to do that while turning the, uh, space into an economic development incubator. Um, that is also some information I shared with Mike and Audra that I was looking forward to bringing to you all in the near future. Uh, but that's just what I'd have to say in regards to those two concerns. But everything else within this MOU, I would say this, it's, uh, the we think should have been agreed on verbally for a very long time. Uh, creative district has been really essential in seeing this project through and it's- And it's just, we want to make sure that it's on paper, that we will return their, um, time and efforts that they've given to us through this project by providing them with a, uh, space to set up their offices.
Because what you're saying, and of course, it does say this, the city staff obligations of the city, city staff assigned to this project will serve as primary point of contact with the local community and the media. So basically, that does put you in charge along with the Oversight Commission in trying to make sure that the spaces are filled and, uh, and leasing them out. Is that correct? That's the way I'm looking at this, these obligations. It's a joint operation?
Yes, that is.
Do you see that?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
And and it is the Commons area, which is leased by the city, um, so we we would have control.
Just wanted to, just wanted to go ahead and, you know, make that, make that clear. Any other, any other comments from council? Okay, I think, did we get a motion on that? We did. Okay, uh, call a vote, please?
Yes, yes.
Call, call a vote, please?
Goodall?
Yes.
Riega?
Yes.
Matei?
I did. Yes.
Ogutrie?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Riega?
Yes. Item eight, eight B, consideration of purchase of two trucks for the police department. We have one vehicle for thirty-two thousand one hundred forty-five dollars. Second item on there is forty-four thousand four hundred ninety dollars. And that's a total package of seventy-six thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars. Uh, being that it was a state contract, it was not necessary to go out to bid. Could I have a motion, please?
Done.
Second?
Second.
Council discussion, Mr. Matei?
Are these, my only question is, are these additional vehicles or replacement vehicles?
Mike?
Sorry, trying to turn my audio on. Charlie is online and he could speak to that. Uh, these are vehicles that are needed because of the new positions added. Uh, but I will let Charlie, uh, answer any questions.
So, um, one of those vehicles is a replacement vehicle for my animal control. Uh, that vehicle that is used now was originally donated for five years, it's got nearly two hundred thousand miles on it. The other one is going to be added for the added position you gave me in the detectives division. And, um, that's where that one will be used.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Gregel, do you have any, any comment?
I just, I just have a question. Usually when we have that cover sheet, when there is a, uh, business item on the agenda, it explains where the funds are coming from. And it didn't on these, it didn't do it on these two vehicles. And it also didn't do it for the Ford, uh, the other on item eight C. So I'm just wondering, Mike, was this budgeted for, uh, at the beginning? Was this an unexpected expense or was it planned?
Okay, so these, uh, vehicles are coming out of the fleet.
Charlie, I think Mike's going to go and explain that?
Thank you. Uh, this is out of the fleet budget and, uh, it has been budgeted for this year. We will prioritize those as we move forward depending on the finances. But, uh, these are prioritized also in that projected budget or some, uh, pickup trucks for other departments that, uh, we can do without. I think the police is a priority on this one.
Okay, thank you. That's all I needed to know.
Okay, Ms. Ogutrie?
No questions.
Mr. Goodall?
So is that the total price they're put together or do we have additional costs to, uh, put the vehicles together? Be ready for the police department?
Charlie, do you want to answer that?
So that's just for the vehicles. There is some added expense, uh, for those two, other than not, um, they're not quite as expensive as the patrol units do.
Do you know what that dollar amount might be approximately?
You know, I don't know exactly. The last truck that I did, uh, was about five thousand dollars.
Okay.
Hi.
Okay. Any other questions, Ms. Goodall? Okay. Mr. Williamson?
Uh, the only question I have is for Chief Gorio. So these vehicles, are they equipped, um, with everything that you would think is required to do the job that you need them to do, drive, train, the way you want it, everything? Or are there items that you would add or think would be required to make it, make your job easier, more effective?
So these two vehicles are standard vehicles, they're not police equipped. However, for the job that they're going to do, they're adequate.
Uh, no, no further questions, thank you.
Okay, and I don't have any further questions. Uh, could we, uh, call a vote, please?
Goodall?
Yes.
Riega?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Ogutrie?
Yes.
White?
Yeah.
Riega?
Yes. Item eight C, consideration of purchase of two twenty-twenty police force interceptor utility vehicles. There again, that was a, another state contract and it was not necessary to go out to bid. And that amount was for the both vehicles together for seventy-eight thousand one hundred eighty-seven dollars and eight cents. Could I have a motion, please?
Done.
Second?
Second.
Council discussion, starting with Mr. Matei?
No questions.
Ms. Gregel?
Sorry, I have one question I would give, my, uh, discount was for buying two because I noticed on there the, the price was seventy-eight one eighty-seven oh eight. But the individual price was forty-one eight ninety-five, which is eighty-three seven ninety for the two. Those two figures, eighty-three seven ninety and seventy-eight one eighty-seven were both on the proposal.
Okay, so what's, what's your, your questions if others, go ahead.
So I can, I can explain that the forty-eight eight ninety-five is a comparison pricing that I have to supply to the state to show what that vehicle would cost me out the door of the dealership. The other price is the price from the GSA pricing.
Okay, that, that really wasn't clear on there. I just couldn't figure out if we were getting a, a good discount on there. No, I have no further questions.
Okay, Ms. Ogut, Ms. Ogutrie?
No questions, I look forward to going on a ride along.
What's your little vehicle?
Mr. Goodall? No questions. Mr. Williamson?
Done. No questions.
Okay, I have no questions. Call a vote, please?
Goodall?
Yes.
Riega?
Yes, yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Ogutrie?
Yes.
White?
Yes, White outside.
Riega?
Yes. Okay, on to, uh, item nine, council reports. Uh, Mr. Matei, do you have anything to report?
No, I have a couple of questions and they don't need answers now. I just want to put them out there. As we talk about coronavirus and all that kind of stuff, we need to think about monument plate and whether or not we should open it. I think that we need to allow and advocate for police, higher M S, protect themselves as much as possible. I recently heard of a woman being arrested and it was intentionally coughing on the officers that were trying to arrest her. And we just need to have our guys protected to do our guys a throw.
I agree.
Be protected, do the job we're asked to do.
Okay.
The state patrol, recently just, uh, they, they, they are asked to revisit their enforcement index, not grab driver licenses and stuff. Intertain the idea of people with a minimum and above all, protect themselves. And that's what I'm suggesting for our people. Uh, COG on Trinidad is commensurate with everything that, that is going on. They canceled the early, the early learning center schools. But by the way, the governor just put out something where schools, now in, in school, education is to happen till like the middle of April. That, that's the next, the next extension, is like, uh, COG is doing some things with regard to home health care. They are not going to be cooking meals for people who are dependent on them and taking them to Aguilar, Primero and Segundo and such. But they will cook them and people can come in and get them. So, uh, there's a lot going on with COG as they're in compliance with everybody else. Know a whole lot about what to do, but we're doing the best we can. Um, Johnson Controls, I, since, fortunately, the neighbors happened to see a vehicle that said Johnson Controls and they don't want to detract of that project and make sure that we're moving along with it. And maybe somebody can tell us where we are for a moment. Uh, I'm happy to hear that we keep the fee so they can use credit cards for payments. And tomorrow, as I understand, is the deadline for receiving applications for manager, city manager position. And I think we need to know where that stands and in light of the coronavirus and what we're going to do, if anything different. And that's all I got.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Good suggestions. Ms. Gregel?
This is just, has to do with the insurance industry because I don't know how much you all know about health insurance, but there's only X amount of days during the, the year that you can enroll for insurance if you do not have it now. But in light of the coronavirus, we got an email in our office today that they are going to do an, an open enrollment for two weeks, starting the end of March, I think, to the middle of April. When I get a definite, uh, date, I will email it and maybe the chamber or somebody can pass it on because if somebody doesn't have health insurance and they're concerned, it might be a good, good thing for them. Other than that, um, everything's, I'm in downtown Trinidad every day, all, all day. And, uh, the foot traffic at first was doing very well and it's kind of slowed down a little bit. But I, it's amazing to me that there's still people around town. And I have a suggestion to increase the funds for the city of Trinidad. I think all of us need to go to, see if we can sell this video for a meeting. She's being out there like he's been loud because this has been freak hilarious. Okay.
Okay. Ms. Ogutrie?
Uh, I, I share some of the things that Councilman Matei has concerns about, um, where we are at the city manager situation. I'd like to know if we need to adjust that at all, given what's been happening the last two weeks. Um, but otherwise, I just, I, I'm pleased to have while everybody is responding to, um, all the constraints on their life. And we need to encourage one another. It's going to be a rough time.
Okay, Mr. Goodall?
I agree with Councilman Matei on the Johnson Controls. I was just thinking about asking for an update on that also. On my, um, Facebook, I shared a, and also on the chat line here, a number for United Way has a COVID-nineteen Community Economic Relief Fund. Um, I'm going to get that number to Mike tomorrow. I don't know how we can get that out there, but they are, um, assisting with bills, rent and food for people that need it. So I'll give that to you, Mike, so we can get that out there however, however needs be. Um, one thing I did in the middle of the meeting, I grabbed a pair of my headphones and plugged them into my laptop. And it made one hell of a difference on me being able to hear. So we continue doing this, I think, something everyone else will, uh, might want to try because when people are unmuting their mics, leaving their speakers on, that's where all the reverb is coming is through your speakers. We're just speaking through your mic and then eliminating that. So I seem to be able to hear a little better.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Okay. Mr. Williamson?
I'm, I'm adding to the comedic value for Karen's video, definitely. An inability to unmute it. One thing I, I just, um, wanted to mention is I definitely appreciate the inquiries as to the, uh, status of the city manager search. I think that would be an important update to get. Um, specifically, I just wanted to encourage, um, everybody that obviously this is a very tough time we're going through just to consider people that, um, are at higher risk, senior citizen centers and senior citizens, I apologize, and, um, people with pre-existing conditions. I think it's important we all really educate ourselves as to protocols we can do to help them and help where possible. I mean, you know, if we take, say groceries to senior citizens, it's important to know that, um, you can actually cause the virus to be passed unintentionally by handing them to family and Iden. So, uh, um, just, we should really be educated in the way that, uh, with you that I will yield my remaining time to, uh, Councilman Matei.
Go ahead, Ed.
Yeah, thank you. It, it, it just occurred to me, I didn't have the earlier. The governor has a, uh, a fund, which is so far, it seems like four o'clock, raised two-point-eight billion dollars to help people, let's see, uh, governors, help people who, due to business closures and, and, and the like of people who are unable to work. It's helpcoloradownow.org. Helpcoloradownow.org. And, and you can make contributions to a state administered fund. It will be used to help folks that are displaced, employment and all that kind of stuff. Did you get that?
Got it. And you know, and that's something, and that, uh, and that's something that we may ourselves want to maybe try to do. It would be a discussion I could have with Mike. Uh, I, I got some information today of somebody, maybe a business wanting to do a startup. Uh, but I will keep, uh, I'll keep you guys in tune with that once I hear from the company as to what their intentions are. Uh, from my end, uh, I've been, along with Mike, we've been listening to the daily reports that the Los Angeles County Health Department and, uh, the emergency services have been putting together uh, the last few days in their daily meeting at ten AM. And they have everyone reporting the city, the county, uh, the emergency groups from Wharton and Los Angeles County, people that want to get on from the school districts, uh, sheriff's department, uh, coroners. Uh, all these different groups are reporting what they're doing, the hospital. So we've been listening in for the last couple, two, three days to hear, to keep, or to have updates as to what's happening within our region. So that's, that's good to hear. Mike, were you going to cover that bill grant form? Uh, yes. Uh, the last thing I wanted to say, and, and, you know, at times like this, uh, you know, we've been noticing across the country that mayors are being approached, uh, you know, for comment. And today I got a comment or a, I got something from our newspaper because of the concern of the economic problems that we could have locally here. If I could offer some sort of encouragement to the local community and our business community. So I did put together a, a small comment, uh, you know, just, just telling people that, you know, this is something that the city of Trinidad has endured in the past, downturned, uh, you know, and this too will, will pass at some point. So, uh, we just have to stay encouraged. We have to try to support our work, our food establishments by taking out food where we can. Uh, if, and when this, it's going to be more important than ever when this thing does pass that we as a community come together and support our local businesses. So that's kind of the premises of what I have talked about, just to let you know. At this point, I'll go and I'll turn it over to Mike for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. So Johnson Controls, I'd like to just bring everybody up to speed. Johnson Controls has, uh, issued RFPs for another installer. They have somebody that they are vetting now. They're ready to go again, but of course, with everything, uh, it's, it's put off. They have been busy correcting, you know, little glitches along the way. They have been busy correcting, you know, little glitches along the way and getting everything reading properly. It's been awesome. We've already helped a lot of people with high voltage water leaks. So it is moving forward and I will have more as soon as, I'm sorry, I'm getting a lot of feedback. I apologize. More at a future date once we get geared up again because we don't want anybody going into people's houses to install meters or light pilots or any of such until this, this whole thing passes. I'm going to try and talk louder. I've got quite the feedback. Can you hear me? Okay.
You can hear Mike?
So, and the mayor, if you would chime in here, I sent out an email regarding the Southwest Chief and the Front Range Ralk Commission. They're wanting to go forward with another Tiger, well, it used to be Tiger Grant, now it's a Build Grant. They, we sponsored the last one and communities along the, who are in the commission all put in their match of $12,500. It didn't pass the last time. We were unsuccessful, but they're asking us to sponsor again. And I think I got pretty good consensus from council that we will move forward and sponsor that. Unless I hear different, Mayor, do you have anything to add to that?
The only that, all I have to say is I talked to Randy Gruber, who's our director in Denver. And I asked him if there was going to be any additional money that we had to put in. And he said because of the last time that we were not successful, that that money is still there. So they're going to use evidently that fund to, you know, to process this new application. So we should not have any more capital on the, go with this particular build grant. And the reason why we're asking for it is because they want to try to get this in sometime in April. And because of the current circumstances, it was good that we were able to bring it to you tonight, so. Mike's computer just died, so he's going to join you here, I guess. So, go ahead, Mike.
No, that's all I had, Mayor, unless there's questions.
Any questions for Mike? No? Les, why don't you go ahead and, do you have anything to report? I think there was a couple of questions that maybe you probably could answer that was answered. One was about the Monument Lake opening. I don't know what your thoughts are. And then also about the city managers' applications. Could you kind of comment?
I will. And here, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first thing you said.
What are your thoughts about approaching the Monument Lake? Or do you think being that that's a business that we have, you know, they're not on their own? That should be something they should control? Or is that something that we should mention?
You know, I see Councilman Matei nodding his head to the negative quite vigorously and now Councilman Goodall is tweeting. You know, Mayor, I think that that is something that I would like to talk with staff. I really would advocate caution and, you know, and really, you know, kind of plan on not going forward the season for Monument Lake. Yes, that is, Mr. Montalongo. You know, I want to say maybe, but really the season, no, I don't, I think it could cause them to halt operations. I think there are a lot of considerations though. But I would like to talk with staff before I really make a recommendation to council. Does that make sense?
Mike has a comment on that.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, Les. I'd also say that his restaurant would, is not going to be able to be open here until the governor lifts any restrictions. And the governor also shut down all resort ski areas. So we may have that fall under the governor's orders and so we'll see from there.
The only other comment that I have on that particular matter is, you know, we're now mid-March. You know, I guess, I don't know when the opening is. His schedule, his scheduled opening is, it could be that, it could be timely that maybe if this thing, if this coronavirus starts to taper off, that it may be in time for him to be able to open. I think that's something that I think just staff will have to work, work through with him as well. I think, Mr. Matei, you have a comment?
Yeah, I do. Maybe what we wanted to do is see what the state of Colorado does with state parks.
Yeah. And Rusty has, maybe a delayed opening, which is what I was just talking about. And I think that's, I think staff will just, will talk with him about that. Okay, that's about the second, this is the second question about the city manager's position. What's your thoughts?
Mayor, I see the Councilman Goodall is this morning.
Go ahead.
Just the word, they did close the incline in Colorado Springs today until further notice. So if that's the direction it's going, I did see that that happened today. The incline is closed down until further notice. So I think that's the direction it is probably going, is closing a whole lot of parks.
Yeah. Okay.
So Mayor and council members of my crew, as Councilman Matei pointed out, tomorrow is the deadline, tomorrow the close of businesses, the deadline for the city manager applications. I can tell everybody that in having spoken to his license today, we have received three applications so far. Now, I don't know who those are. I don't know, you know, what that consists of. I don't know who submitted the applications. But thus far, we have received a grand total of three. Now, the city is receiving the applications as is the workforce center. And Donna checked the other day and the workforce center did not have any applications. So we have received the three. And by the application, I mean estimated cover letter. I would suggest Monday was going to be a work session for you. And all of that work session was going to be Dana Crawford and someone else coming down to talk about the Fox Theater and other matters. I don't know what the likelihood of that going forward is, but I would like to recommend that we have an executive session in either event on Monday to discuss the city manager matter. My, my recommendation to you would be, even though these are extraordinary times, I think you should go forward with the, the applications. And I, you know, I'm not trying to hold your collective feet to the fire. I will just say that it's necessary for a lot of reasons to try and, and do this. And again, we've given all the notice we possibly can of essentially statewide, and that is the number of applications. So I don't think it really would be necessary to, to increase the time period for more applications. Now, I say that, and I want to emphasize again, that I have not seen those applications. One, one I'd like to make real quickly, that is, Donna was going to do like a kind of a summary or kind of a point assessment of the applicants. And that was going to be if you were, if you were going to receive a lot of applications. So I don't think there's a need for that now. And incidentally, she will transmit those to all of you on Friday. So however many applications there are, you may get those and receive those on Friday. So Councilwoman Grego has a question, if I may. That is helpful to have visual.
Yes, it does. I'm here in my office, by the way, so I've got all kinds of visuals. The question, you know, the governor's said that you cannot, you cannot be invisible or can't. So an important matter, like the city manager meeting, discussion, and it being an executive session. Is it possible that we can have an in-person executive session as long as we split each other's feet apart?
Right. You know, I think that is how we ought to do it. And, and I was thinking about that on my wedding day. And I, I think that's what we ought to do. Maybe have a couple of people with a desk. Maybe one of you or me, like where staff sits, and then have people intersperse in the audience. Like one in the left front row or the right front row, then people in the back and just talk loudly, seriously, spread out. Yeah, I see you, Councilwoman Ogletree. No, that's right. And just speak loudly. That's correct. Okay, so you guys are all doing funny things. Sorry.
You know, Les, let me go ahead and speak up on that. And, you know, I agree with you. I agree with you that I think we should move forward. And if we wouldn't have gotten any applications, we may have a consideration. But I think this particular case, we have some applications already in. I think that, I believe we should move forward. As far as being able to hold an executive session with, you know, what we're trying to do our part here to stay six feet apart, there shouldn't be any reason why we can't do that, you know, in here in council chambers. We could do that easily enough. So I say we move forward with it and let's see what can do.
So can we plan, please, on an executive session on Monday regardless of what happens? For work session?
Mayor, if I may.
A work session, but definitely executive session.
Mike has a comment?
If I may, I failed to report that Debbie Wagner and was coming down on legislative matters. And since the legislation is shut down, we've canceled her. And Fox Theater update, we've canceled them also. So there is no work session agenda items. So did everybody hear that, that there is no, there are no work session agenda items? So we'll just have an executive session, a special meeting with an executive session or however it works. Talk that over.
Okay, if there is no further discussion for tonight, motion to adjourn?
Zoom.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, call vote please?
Goodall?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamsson?
Yes.
Yes. And one, one final note, just to let you know, is that Tom Murphy is videotaping this tonight on YouTube. And he has talked about going forward with the future meetings. If we have to have him in this manner, that he'll be able to do the Trinidad Times TV that he once did. And they'll be able to have it at, I guess, designated times like they used to on Saturdays and other days of the week. So just to let the public know out there that that may be coming to you guys as well. So with that being said, thank you, guys. I know this has been a little bit trying. And we'll see you, we'll see you, guys. Have a, have a good day. Bye-bye.